Good morning, everyone. We're going to call a meeting of the Board of Supervisors and the Liquor and Entertainment Board to order. Today is Thursday, August 4th, 2016. It is just 8:30 a.m. We're at the Community Center Sierra Room at 8:51 East Williams Street, and I think we're also streaming today. Can we have a roll call, please, Sue, for the record?
Good morning. Supervisor Boud, Supervisor Von Kowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Shir, Mayor Kroll, we have a call.
Thank you, Sue. Can we call on our good friend Pat Propster of the Calvary Chapel? Pat, thanks for getting us started off on a good foot today.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. A little bit inspiring work today. I came across, somebody sent me a text the other day, said, "Did you know what a Jesus nut is?" Yeah, me! But they said, "No, the Jesus nut is actually the main rotor retaining nut on a helicopter." I was like, "Wow, that's super interesting to me." You know, because it holds everything together.
There's a reason for that.
There's definitely a reason for that, because without that nut, all you have is you better pray to Jesus, because that's about the only hope you have left. Which brings me to the verse this morning that I wanted to share with everyone, and that's, "Unless the Lord builds the house, they labor in vain that build it; unless the Lord guards the city, the watchmen watch in vain." So we need to have that main thing keep the main thing, the main thing. So, Lord, we come before you this morning, and, Lord, we ask you to hold us together, Lord, you would keep us together. Lord, I ask you for your wisdom, your guidance, and your provision to be in this room today with everyone who speaks and a ready decision that needs to be made, Lord, would it glorify you? But we thank you for the amazing call upon our lives here in this region, and, Lord, we ask you for your oversight in everything that we think and everything that we do, Lord, and everything we say. Bless this house, Lord, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen. Thanks, Pat. Well done. We'll remember the Jesus nut.
That's right.
And has more applications than just helicopters.
That's right.
Good time. Can I call on Dave Williams to come up and lead us with the pledge? Dave, come on up, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pat.
All right. We'll now turn to item number five, public comment. This is the time of the public is invited to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this public body. Good morning. Good morning.
I'm speaking anonymously because of the retaliation we survivors of domestic violence are receiving. I received this letter from a Carson City employee, and her offices are housed in Council Member Shirks Ward, and she is the counterpart to Maxine Cortez. It's Jolie Higgins. She is the supervisor of the District Court. She received a child abuse court case file from Maxine Cortez's court, Justice Court, and in that file, of course, were the falsified court documents that were generated.
Mayor, if I could interject, this is a good time just to remind the public as well as the board that public comment is to hear comments on items that the board has jurisdiction over, and the judicial branch is not something that the board has jurisdiction over. And on top of that, I just want to remind everybody that the member of the public has in the past mentioned litigation that's before the court, and members that we may have jurisdiction over or represent, and so we can't comment on pending litigation as well.
My understanding is, yes, you can't comment, but this is public comment.
It's public comment. What the DA is saying is this is public comment related to things that we have jurisdiction over, and since we're not the judicial branch of government, it's a separate branch of government, we don't have jurisdiction there. So that's why, I think what she's saying is that comment doesn't help, it's not appropriate in this forum.
I do understand that, sir, but these are Carson City employees. You do have authority over Carson City employees.
And again, Mayor, those are, Carson City employees are under the judicial branch, which you have no jurisdiction over.
All right.
I would like to see that in writing.
All right.
Can someone produce that in writing?
Not right, not immediately, but that's one of the issues we're dealing with, but we'll talk with you afterwards, or whatever you want to do.
Well, I'll finish my comment.
Sure.
The letter states that, and went to another court. Jolie Higgins states that the documents that she worked off of were falsified, and so Jolie wrote in the letter how the Maxine Cortez documents were falsified, and Jolie handled it correctly. She took accountability and responsibility for the falsified documents generated by both court administrators. Both are Carson City employees.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. All right.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Carol. How are you this morning?
I'm just fine.
It's a beautiful morning.
Yes, it is, and it's going to be on August 27th also.
Very good.
I'm just here today to be sure that you all are aware and invite you to the Shootout for the Future II. It's a fundraiser, the second one that we're doing, and when I say "we," it's the Carson City Rifle and Pistol Club, the IDPA, and the Northern Sierra Ladies Gun Club. We're trying to raise some additional funds to give to you all to improve the gun range. There's lots and lots of events going on. It's on the calendars of both Carson Now and Nevada Appeal, but I wanted to be sure that you all were aware and felt invited to come out and participate. We've got lots of fun things going to go on. Everything from poker shoots to some instruction. We've got some high-powered rifle contests. There's a lot going on between 9:00 and 1:00 o'clock, so if you're free and can come out on August 27th, please do.
Carol, where are donations to be mailed to?
To the Foundation for Carson City Park and Recreation. There's a P.O. box, and I'll have to get that for you, Karen, because I don't know it off the top of my head.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out also, and let Carol know, she did a lot of work for it. We have been, we received notification that we're going to get the grant to build the restroom, so we'll be bringing that to the board, and hopefully in a few months, we'll start construction on it as well.
Oh, wonderful. There's a lot of people that are going to appreciate that restroom.
Myself included.
Yes.
In more ways than one.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. All right. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Molly Bundy Terrell, and I'm a longtime resident of Carson City and a native of Nevada. I'm talking this morning, and I'm going to talk about the Vintage Project, and not because anybody there told me to do this. I don't live within 300 feet of it. I may live within 900 feet, but I do live in that area, and I have talked to some of the residents in that area, and have also been part of a committee that's trying to work something. And I appreciate the opportunity to express my views. I also know that you face many difficult decisions as supervisors, and I do appreciate your service to this community. I watch all the Board of Supervisors, I watch all the meetings in Carson, so I want you to know I'm somewhat informed about issues. I would like, on the Vintage Project, I would like to see real democracy have a chance to work regarding this project. There was a coin that was handed out recently that Carson City prides itself as being a community that values its citizens. First of all, I do want to express my concern regarding the number of plans that have already been approved, which amount to about 3,000 dwelling units, including homes and apartments, which may increase Carson City's population from 7,000 to 8,000 residents within the next few years. As revealed in the report from Health and Human Services during the last Board of Supervisors meetings, there are not sufficient resources to deal with health issues now, including doctors, much less to accommodate the anticipated growth. Also, the Sheriff's Office and the Fire Department are reaching their limits, including helping some of those who are dealing with health crises. So it seems to me right now there should be no rush to approve more development projects at this time. In fact, it may be wise to slow down and take a deep breath. I would like to propose a plan for Carson City to, quote, "take a vote" regarding those who live within 900 feet of the Vintage Project. First of all, the huge variation from the current zoning that is being suggested in this plan, plus a large number of residents who will be affected, seem to indicate that a different approach is needed in handling this development. I believe that the current master plan had a lot of input from the Carson City residents, and when this is being challenged by a project that needs a variance, special use permits, zoning change, so forth, then it is apparent that the original intent of the community is being dismissed. The changes requested are particularly problematic to some because it allows commercial development. I would like to propose that the city, whether it's the planning department or whatever, to send a questionnaire to those living within 900 feet of the proposed development that would have just a few questions, such as, "Do the residents want the current zoning to be maintained, or are they okay in general terms with the changes that will be necessary in order for the Vintage Project to be approved?" I know this will cost, and I am willing to pay for the mailing, both to mailing out and the return envelopes that I think need to come back to the planning. I envision that the questions on this will be simply stated, and some of the residents, a few for and a few against, and there are some for. I've gone around and talked to some of the people in that community, so it's not everybody. Plus, the Planning Commission would develop the questionnaire, so that would be simple, easy. There would be a return envelope, as I had mentioned, so that they can just send it right back to the city. I know from talking directly with some of the residents of this area that there are many residents who cannot make it to the meetings of the Planning Commission, as there are many who have health concerns themselves or their family members do. In addition, many individuals do not feel comfortable standing up and stating their thoughts to a group of individuals that they don't know. It's just not in their makeup. I would rather that the residents of this area have influence as to how the Anderson Ranch should be developed, rather than those on the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, who do not live within 900 feet and do not have to live on a daily basis with what is decided. Therefore, for residents to have the opportunity to actually, quote, "vote" is important and will truly help them to realize that this is a community that values its citizens. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking out. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Molly. Thank you. Come on up.
My name is Kiska Ikard, and I am the newly hired CEO, or as I like to say, adopted CEO for the Nevada Humane Society. So I just wanted to come and introduce myself to all of you. I've been here for now four weeks, so this is my fourth week, and really trying to assess what the priorities are, and certainly getting the shelter open in a very seamless way is a priority, a communications plan. Because in my experience, and I came from Sonoma County, I was the CEO of the Sonoma Humane Society, and prior to that, I spent 12 years at the San Francisco SPCA, all no-kill shelters. That's my background, that's kind of all that I know. So I wanted to commend the Council for doing the really brave thing, which I think was contracting with the Nevada Humane Society, going outside of your county to look for a good option for the animals. And I know that that's a very difficult thing in your position, and I really want to commend you because it's wonderful to be down here in the community. The response that I receive is very positive. Of course, the high priority is hiring for the Carson City manager position, and I have a very strong candidate that's coming out to visit next week, and so she's going to spend some time with Nick, as well as Lisa Schute from Cassie, very strong demonstrated leader, and I think she's going to be a really good fit for the community. So fingers crossed we'll have somebody in place prior to the shelter opening. I will be meeting with Public Works later this morning to go over a couple of things, hopefully have a better idea of a timeline. What we will likely do is, as soon as we receive the certificate of occupancy, move the animals into the shelter, get everything worked out well, and a couple of weeks later, have a large grand opening. But of course, we will have tours for everybody, and just can't tell you how excited I am to be here, and we have a wonderful community here and a great community for animals, so thank you.
Very good. Okay, is it Kiska?
Yes.
All right.
USS Kiska.
I got it now. Okay, okay.
It actually means kitten in Russian. Not Russian, just ex-hippies, but my dad was retired military, and I had the privilege of spending some time on the USS Kiska, so anyway, thank you.
Just peg up, that's all right. Don't worry. All right. Thank you, and welcome to Carson City, and thanks for keeping our animals well taken care of.
A privilege.
All right. Dave, Mr. Williams, good morning to you.
Good morning, Board. Dave Williams, I'm wearing two hats today. One is as a lawyer, which I'm hoping I don't have to wear that too much on this issue. I'm here to promote the fine arts. In my spare time, I like to do outdoor painting, and we have Steve White here, who is instrumental in showing that the artist's sale of an original artwork constitutes free speech protected under the First Amendment. In that end, Mr. White has worked with Sparks and with City to get municipal codes to protect the rights of artists, and this comes into play with the farmer's market and the beautiful McFadden Plaza, which just opened, and we would like to have the city designate areas where people can go out and paint and sell their art, and I think we could probably work that out. We'd also like to, with a group of artists, we'd also like to put together a fine art show on the McFadden Plaza, and we'd be happy to work with the city on that, and we'd be happy to organize it. We just need an identified free speech zone, and I'll call Council's attention to White v. City of Sparks, Ninth Circuit, from 2007 is a key decision on this. Case law is already established. Basically, I'd rather put on my artist hat for this and go out. It really helps businesses if there's people out painting. It attracts tourists, it attracts attention, and gets people to go to the businesses and vendors. I think it's good for everybody if we can work with the community and the business community to make this happen.
I think, Dave, Adriana, doesn't our municipal code right now accommodates White, the White decision, does it not, or does it not?
And I can't say with 100% certainty that it does, but I know that Iris Yow in our office was working with, I think, Lee on this very issue, so we're working on it.
Okay, well, I will say that Lee Plemel has spoken to Linda Marone, or Maroney, and she's still hostile toward artists coming into that parking lot that's been used to the farmer's market, so that is still an ongoing issue.
Yeah. I think I'd like to talk with you about the, you know, from a continuing education point of view, even though I'm retired dad, I'd like to talk with you a little bit about that, because I don't, you know, I don't know how far that goes, the White decision goes, but that's for us lawyers to talk about.
Well, Mr. White's here, and he'll probably educate a little bit.
I know, but let me just assure you that Adriana and the DA's office is looking very closely at how do we make these things happen, and we want to comply with the law, so that's what we're doing.
Sure. All right. Great. Thank you.
Good morning, folks. How are you today? First, let me just start out, as a result, some of the things in the news. I want to thank the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank our local police. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Stephen White, artist, artist advocate, I'm out here from Silver Springs. But I want to thank the police department, and I want to, God bless all of the police department, all these guys that put their lives on the line every day for us. I just want to start out by saying that. You know, when we're dealing with this issue of artists' rights and artists', it isn't artists' rights, it's everybody's right to engage in First Amendment-protected speech. The hardest thing that attorneys have in writing these things is, you know, we've grown up over the last 40 years thinking of artists as commercial vendors, they're out there selling their wares. That's what it's always been referred to, and the federal court ruling kind of turns out on its head. I gave, you know, we gave you a whole lot of information to digest the last time we were here, and I hope you all read that, and I told you at the time, all those words all come down to just two simple things, really. And it's important that you understand this. How does a police officer on the street determine who is a First Amendment-protected citizen engaged in the sale of their artistic self-expression versus a commercial vendor that has to have a license? How do you do that? That's key to everything. It all comes down to just two things. First off, it must be self-expression, not somebody else's artwork, your own artwork that you created yourself, or if it's a team of people, a collaboration, at least one member has to be there that created that work of art. Number two, just like the spoken and the written words are purely expressive, you can't do anything else with the spoken and written word, you know, except to express yourself. This is why I knew I would win this ruling from the court, and it went through 24 federal judges, and they all agreed. They had to agree. My artwork was purely expressive. It's paintings, you can't do anything with it but hang it on the wall. You see what I mean? That's key to it. That's why the fine arts that are protected by the First Amendment rise to that full level of protection, because they are purely expressive. Painting, drawing, sculpture, photography, printed self-expression, engraving, stained-glass windows, but only as art for art's sake, not as a functional window, you see? Music, theater, dance, and film. What do they have in common? They're useless. They're purely expressive. And the Supreme Court has pointed this out, when they pointed out that the paintings, the abstract paintings of Jackson Pollock were dribbles of paint on a canvas, the Jabberwocky verse of Lewis Carroll, rhyming words without meaning, and the music without words of Arnold Schoenberg are all unquestionably entitled to the full protection of the First Amendment because a work of art is specifically created by an artist to convey some idea, concept, emotion, or perspective. So it all just comes down to that simple thing. Police officer walks up, number one, did they create it themselves? Number two, does it have any other purpose? Is it meant to be worn? Then it's not, it's not real, you know, it's not protected speech. Arizona League of Cities and Towns Model City Tax Code, written way back in 1985, exemption option X, exempted fine artists such as painters and sculptors and similar works of fine art from sales tax and business licenses, but in that same code it says, "However, millwork, leatherwork, clothing, food, macrame, they list pottery, all these other things, when such items have a dual purpose, both functional and aesthetic, do not, are not exempt from licensing." Interesting. No, that was written way back in 1985, and yet the Ninth Circuit just ruled on that in 2007 and held to that same standard. So when attorneys are writing these codes, and it's so important that you define this, because if you don't define it, people lose their First Amendment rights to engage in the most powerful and oldest form of human speech, art.
Yeah, I think so.
Now, one last thing I want to point out. The second sentence in that ruling, "We hold that an artist's sale of this artwork constitutes speech protected by the First Amendment." It's very difficult for people to wrap their mind around the fact that me selling my artwork on the sidewalk is no different than you and I standing there talking to each other. The sale of the artwork doesn't amount to anything, doesn't it? Doesn't, you know, relate in this discussion at all. So, and I want to tie it right back to kids again. We have never been in a place in our country's history where we needed to give the fine arts back to our children more. We need to give children alternatives to gun, drugs, and violence. We need to give our society back the arts so we can build bridges of understanding between all these people in our country. They're so diverse. The arts are the single greatest tool we have for building bridges of understanding.
I appreciate it.
The only way we're going to do that is to create community participation in the arts, and you do that by creating really nice little community fine art shows next to some of these other events downtown.
You didn't by any chance happen to attend the interview of the Arts and Cultural Commission interviews last night, did you?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You know, I actually, I do this work, and I help artists all over the country in this matter.
All right.
You're just one in another city, but it's so important.
I got you. All right.
Thank you so much, folks.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dave. All right. Good morning.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Steve Rozier, and I'm here on behalf of my business, Lake Tahoe Markets. In the spring of 2016, my business entered into contract with Doug Kramer of Mama Pop's Diner to manage a weekly Wednesday evening farmer's market near his restaurant in downtown Carson City. Linda Maroney, who is under contract with the city to run the Saturday morning farmer's market, sent me a threatening email, copied to Michael Slaga, advising me in an email that she's emailed all of her farmers and vendors, telling them that the Saturday morning market is not affiliated with the Wednesday evening market, and demanding that we not use the location Third and Curry Streets in describing our market. I have also heard from several vendors that Linda has advised them that because she is a representative of the city, that she has the right to tell them they cannot work at both markets. On one occasion, I actually witnessed Ms. Maroney tele-vendor in a very threatening way, that if they choose to work at the Wednesday market, they can no longer work at the Saturday market. Ms. Maroney has also harassed vendors through social media in the use of Third and Curry Street.
Okay. Hang on a minute. How far could we go down this road?
Well, since the individual's not here to defend herself, perhaps you can submit your comments, and we can put them on the record.
I'd feel more comfortable doing that, rather than engaging in a legal dispute in front of us here today. I mean, that's, but, you know, so I'm kind of torn between, you know, we were talking about First Amendment rights in the legal disputes, so I'm trying to be fair to everybody on this.
And...
So if you could, you know, maybe write up your comments, give them to, send them to the district attorney for them to look at, and we'll take it from there.
Because basically, I'm here today to put on public record that she's breached her contract, she's not acting per her contract states that she has to be a goodwill ambassador to vendors and customers. We were out there on the 30th, and she was threatening vendors and customers, vendors saying that if you work a Wednesday market, you're no longer invited back on a Saturday. She's under contract with the city. I'm here with my business, Lake Tahoe Markets. She's breaching contract, and we're asking for termination, and we're asking for the market to be put up on bid, because it's never bid on, and it just continues.
That's why I asked you to submit this to the district attorney. We can take your comments, and we could submit them as part of the record, if you'd like, for today.
Okay. All right. So, thank you. So I hand them over to you?
Is it copy? Do you want to have a copy?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jennifer. How are you?
Good morning. How are you guys?
See, you're accompanied by the nation's finest?
Yes, I am.
All right. Why don't you tell us a little bit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board of Supervisors, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm so honored here today to present Steven Brunner. He's our new Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Open Space. He comes to us after an impressive 28-year, years of service with the United States Marine Corps. We're so happy to have him here. It's great to have a fresh outside perspective, and I look forward to all that he can, you know, bring to our department and to the community, and I'll let him just introduce himself.
Welcome to Carson City, Mr. Brunner, John, and thank you for 28 years of good service. So Marines are...
So Marines are in good stead in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jennifer, for those kind comments. Mr. Mayor and Board of Supervisors, good morning. For the record, my name is Stephen Brunner, and I would just like to take this opportunity to introduce myself as your new Deputy Director of Parks Recreation and Open Space. As Jennifer said, I just completed twenty-eight years in the United States Marine Corps, which I'm very proud of. And now, I'm very humbled and honored to be given this amazing opportunity to act as an ambassador for our community. And I'm really looking forward to doing great things. I'm looking forward to supporting our staff and the community and ensuring that we have the best parks and recreational facility and open spaces in the community. And barring any questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions to Stephen?
Welcome.
Thank you.
I think our Commander in Chief over there would probably love to take you out and show you some of the trails. He can give you a good run.
I'm just not sure if he can keep up.
You're hired.
I've run with him. I think he can.
You're hired.
Maybe we'll find out.
You can always tell, you can always tell the Navy up here that I called you by the wrong name, so don't worry about that. All right. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Welcome aboard, and we look forward to working with you. And Jen, thanks very much. Okay? All right, folks. All right. Any other public comment this morning? Anybody? I don't see any. Okay. Let's then move to the minutes, item number six, the minutes of June 22nd, July, July 7th. Everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of June 22nd and July 7th, 2016, for the Carson City Board of Supervisors as presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up item seven. Any changes to the agenda?
No change.
Any changes, board? Unless there's objection, then we will take the agenda as published. We'll now recess as the Board of Supervisors, and we'll reconvene as the Liquor and Entertainment Board, and the record will reflect that Sheriff Furlong is here. We'll move to item number ten, public comment on matters within the jurisdiction or purview of the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Anybody? I don't see any. Then we'll move to the minutes of June 16th and July 7th for the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Everybody had a chance to look at those minutes? Motion's in order.
I move to approve the minutes of June 16th and July 7th, 2016, for the Carson City Liquor and Entertainment Board as presented.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up item 12. This is possible action for Amy Looper. Is that correct? Is Amy? Good morning, Amy. How are you? Come on up. For additional liquor manager for Dolgin Midwest LLC, A Dollar General. Lena, you want to take us through this, where we are?
This item is for possible action to approve Amy Looper as the additional liquor manager for Dolgin Midwest LLC, doing business as Dollar General, number 14780, liquor license number 17-29913, located at 3059 Highway 50 East. Dollar General is applying to add an additional liquor manager to the current package liquor license, and staff is recommending approval.
Brad. Supervisor Bankowski.
And this shows that Amy is an addition, but later in the package, it shows that she's replacing Sean Bartlett. So is Sean being removed?
Yes, he was an additional liquor manager on the license. The original liquor manager that applied is still on the license. Sean was an additional one that was added, and Amy is now replacing him. So there's still two liquor managers on the license.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Morning, Amy. And want to tell us what you're doing, and tell us some good things.
This is my first time participating in anything like this, so I'm a little nervous. But, so I was hired on with Dollar General back the end of September and was assigned to the Northern Nevada District the end of November. So, been in Nevada, basically relocated from Northern California. My prior history is twenty-six years with Rayleigh's in Bel Air as a store director and district manager, owned a grocery outlet, and worked for beverages in more Northern California, and then came on with Dollar General. So, so I've been out here for approximately eight months, working in several counties. Just really excited to be here. I don't know if there's anything specific that you'd like to ask or would like to know about me?
I think we're okay. We just want to hear from you a little bit.
Okay. Well, that's, that's it.
Any questions? Okay, motions in order.
Make a motion. I move to approve Amy Looper as the additional liquor manager for Dolgin Midwest LLC, DBA Dollar General, number 14, 14780, liquor license number 17-29913, located at 3059 Highway 50 East, subject to the following condition, that the additional liquor manager must complete a server training course acceptable to the sheriff's office within one hundred and twenty days pursuant to CCMC 4.13.060.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. You understand all the conditions that were on there, Amy?
Yes, sir.
All right. If there's any question, ask now, ask the sheriff, okay? All right, thank you. All right. We'll now take up item 13. This is concluding public comment on the Liquor and Entertainment Board. Anybody? I don't see anything. Then we, unless there's an objection, we will adjourn as the Liquor and Entertainment Board, and we'll reconvene now as the Board of Supervisors. Take up item 16. This is for possible action, condition of each fund in the Treasury. Board members, any questions of Ms. Paulson, who's here? Public, any comments? Motions in order.
I move to accept the report on the condition of each fund in the Treasury and the statements of receipts and expenditures through July 22nd, 2016, through NRS 251.030 and NRS 354.290.
There's a motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Okay, let's take up item 17. This is on purchasing and contracts. This is for crack sealant from Maxwell Products, Inc. Laura, you're going to give us the top line, and Mr. Schultz is going to give us the crack sealing part of it, right? All right.
Laura Tadman, purchasing and contracts. Good morning. This is to approve the purchase of crack sealant from Maxwell Products for not to exceed amount of $140,000 to be funded from the street repair account.
Good morning. Darren Schultz, Public Works. Good to see you again. We're here, we do this every year. This is the material that we use to fill the cracks out in our streets. We have many of them. And not much has changed from last year. This product is what works best in the equipment that we use to fill cracks. We have tried others, and we just keep coming back to this one because it causes the least problems. We do, as we have in years past, Laura assisted this year with going out and looking at bids that other agencies hold for crack filling products, and to determine, to make sure that the price that Maxwell is giving us, because it's a non-bid item, is fair. And we found, again, came to the conclusion that the price that we have is fair. It's in fact lower than some bids that we found, formal bids that were put out in the street. So, we're comfortable moving forward. Any questions?
We have some questions up here.
Okay.
Darren, I know the product works for the equipment. How does it work for the streets? I mean, are you satisfied with the performance of the product?
Yes, that's a good question. I don't even talk about that anymore because it, we get focused on the other details. But yes, the product, in terms of what we put down in the cracks and sealing the street, it's good. There's not a lot of variation between the companies that provide the actual tar. That's pretty standard, although there are different, we can, we can order the tar differently in terms of what additives are in there, in terms of aggregate or those things. So we can vary that. But in terms of the actual tar, there's not a big difference between companies. But we are happy with the results on the street, yes.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
Last year, we did a little additional crack filling.
We did.
How did that affect the approved budgeted amount? Did, we're approving $140,000, or being asked to approve $140,000 this year. What did we approve last year, if you remember off the top of your head? And did we exceed that because we authorized additional crack filling? Can you just kind of walk us through what we're doing out there?
Sure, absolutely. So last year, we spent around $135,000 on Maxwell product for 2016. So this year, we went a little bit above that. Granted that we did do additional crack filling last year more than we had in the past, but we kind of see that as our new norm at Public Works. It's just, that's a big complaint, and it's a big issue with the older the streets get, the cracks get wider, and we've got to get out there and do that. So we don't anticipate the amount of cracks filled this year to be, to be any less certainly than last year. You will remember that we did, we did some outside contracting where we had, you know, contractors come in and do the wide crack repair and various other patching, that sort of thing. But the general, the smaller crack filling, that's going to continue just as we did last year. We anticipate doing the same amount this coming year.
And then also, it looks like we're also interested in buying an additional product called tacklers that you spray on and reduces the tackiness. Can you tell us why we would want to use that and what it accomplishes for us?
Absolutely. So this is, we typically get two products from them. The first one is the tar that I talked about that goes in the machine, and that is by far 98, 99% of the amount of money we spend towards Maxwell. The other thing that we do purchase from them is a tack, and it's basically, it comes in drums and cans, and it's a spray. So after we, after we fill the crack, as you know, the tar is kind of gooey laying out there, and depending on the time of year and temperature, if we want to get cars, if we want to move off of that, and we remove our cones quickly, we can spray this, and it's an application that goes back on top of the crack that we just filled, and it prevents that tar from a car, when it drives over it, from slinging up and getting on the car. So that's what the other product is that we purchase from Maxwell. We don't do that all the time. It just depends on where we're applying it, the weather, the temperature, et cetera, and how soon we want to get cars on there.
Jim.
Good morning. I asked you in the email to you, we purchased this product prior to this purchase, and the amount, so far, we spent $136 prior to, is that correct?
That's correct.
So total now is $275,000 on this particular product. And where it's used and how it's used, is it used on a variation of, I'm just curious, the size of cracks? Does it, is there, is there a measurement you can't use it on? If it goes to three inches, four inches, you can't use this product? Or is it usable on the width of the crack? And how is it determined where you use this product within this community? How do we know what streets it's going to go on? I'm just asking.
So the product works on all sizes of cracks. We can put it in wide cracks, narrow cracks, but it loses its effectiveness once the crack is wider than about two inches. So it doesn't mean that we don't use it on wider cracks, but it doesn't, it's not, it's intent really isn't for that. The problem is that if you have a wider crack, you want to go out and do a more thorough repair, and that costs additional money. So what we will do is we will still put this product in a wider crack, knowing that it's not the perfect fix, but it will seal that crack and hopefully prevent it from getting even wider or water getting down there and freezing. So that's basically how it's used. To your second question, we have, we have a network of streets throughout the city. We have it all in a computer model, and it tells us the, what the shape of the street is, any given segment. And then we're watching that and periodically going out, and as things come up on our radar in terms of, hey, this area, it hasn't been sealed for so many years, we go out there and we seal the cracks. So depending on the level of service that that road shows, you know, how much it's falling apart, it also depends on how much traffic that road gets in terms of how often we get out there and seal the cracks. Furthermore, we are trying to be responsive to citizens when they have particular concerns in their neighborhood or an area they're in, and we take that as well. We take those requests, and we put that into the system in terms of, you know, where we're going to go. And if, you know, something comes up that we haven't been, you know, hey, we're going to, we're going to get out there in six months, but somebody brings something to our attention and needs to be fixed right away, we'll do it right away.
Any other questions? Are there Laura, Darren? Public comment, anybody? Let's go. Motion's in order.
I move to approve the purchase of crack sealant from Maxwell Products, Inc., for a not-to-exceed amount of $140,000 to be funded from the street repair account.
Motion and a couple seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay, carried unanimous. Thank you very much. And Darren, I drove on Oak Ridge Drive the other day, you did some large crack sealing there? Pretty well done. Thank you. All right. All right. Let's take up the IT stuff. We do this annually?
Yes.
All right. Who's taking? Laura, then Eric? Okay, go.
This is to approve contract 1617-040, IT hardware joiner contract with multiple vendors, Insight Public Sector, State Networking, Cisco, Dell, Apple, CDW Government, and SHI International, for a total not-to-exceed amount of $500,000. And Eric is here to answer all of your questions.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Eric Von Schimmelmann, Chief Information Officer. Yeah, so annually, we bring to you, we used to bring blanket POs for all our major vendors, and working with Laura, we're trying to kind of streamline our processes. So we're doing a whole bunch of joiner contracts right now. That's how we've done it in the past with the blanket POs. So this is just an overall, we spend approximately half a million dollars in technology throughout the year. It comes from all various departments' budgets. I'd like to actually see that all be rolled into IT eventually. Currently, I had put in a request for CIP, but it did not go through, especially for hardware replacements and stuff like that. So how we do this is really up to the departments to tell us they're, they have the funding and that they do have a need for replacement, computer replacements. We try to tell them, hey, you're coming up to date, you need to look at replacing these computers. But again, it's up to the departments to actually fund that currently. So that's why the amount is kind of varied and through the various departments.
So Eric, do you know of any major IT projects that we'll be embarking on over the next year?
Well, as you mentioned probably three board meetings ago, we are in the middle of our network replacement IP, it was called IP infrastructure replacement upgrades. I've actually got to bring that to the board. We were only, we lost our funding this current year. So that was about $100,000 that we spent last year. This was supposed to be year two. I'm going to be bringing that back to you here in the next month or so to get funded for that as well. So that'll be in here. Other than that, it's general computer replacements, some other smaller projects that I have going on. I have a few additional network infrastructure projects that I have funded in here, under my budget, that will be under here.
Well, Eric, Laura says you can answer all questions, so I'm just, I'm just curious how big the universe is. No, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you both. It's been a pleasure, Laura, working with you on the contracting side. It's been a vast improvement over what we've done in the past. And Eric, I just wanted to commend you with the work that you're doing in the IT department. I mean, it's been amazing how much you've gotten done in such a short period of time.
Good morning. Just quickly, if you can just touch base, I sent you that email about the budget and Just quickly, if you can just touch base, I sent you that email about the budget and so forth and your response was, I would like to have all technologies purchased funded through the IT budget. Then you went on to kind of a, if you can remember, okay, if you can just tell us why is the funding mechanism, the way it's set up, the way it is?
The way it currently is? That came about, about 10 or 15 years ago. IT used to have a CIP project under their purview for years and all hardware replacements and equipment upgrades fell under that CIP project. It was called SPAN back at the, in the time. And about 10 years ago, that funding mechanism was eliminated and it was rolled back to the departments to, again, this was during the recession, so it's rolled back to the departments to decide if they needed an upgrade or not, opposed to IT saying, hey, here's our replacement cycle. We need to go forward, PCs are five years, network, I mean, my standards are PCs are five years, network equipment, switches, routers and everything are every 10 years and that's the one that I'm trying to replace right now. So.
Eric, I think the free Wi-Fi in McFadden Plaza is a wonderful addition. Why don't you talk a little bit about what that costs us, if anything, and, and how it's being provided?
Okay, so the free Wi-Fi, Battleborn Wi-Fi. I actually worked with a vendor, so the cost to the city is actually zero excluding my time. I just worked with them, contracted with them and kind of did a mutual agreement with them. I got them in contact with business owners like Mark Lepicolo, so we were allowed to go on his roof to get access to this. It's all their equipment. The vendor that we use is Sky Fiber Internet, so they're providing it as a free service to the city. What they're going to do is eventually they're going to start marketing their stuff as a higher band below that so that you can increase your speeds. So that's their take for it. I've talked to them, we're planning on going down the whole downtown corridor, so the next area will probably be City Hall. We're going to catch it off of the top of the St. Charles Hotel with their wireless, come down to City Hall, I think is the next one we can hit. And we're going to try to bounce up and down the street, providing outdoor Wi-Fi for the public for free all over. And I've also talked to them about adding additional areas, different parks, and as we get this going, to see if there's a need for that and see how the citizens like that. Potentially neighborhoods too, Mr. Mayor, where people have come in to complain about slow, slow internet speeds, not to mention any of the neighborhoods by name, but.
Yours? Yeah. Yours?
Yes.
Well, you know, come down to the old section of town, folks. All right. All right. Well, I, one, I think it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great service and I, and I tried it out, out there and I think, you know, it's, it's really forward-thinking stuff, so it's good. All right. Other public comment on this issue, we're getting a little astray here, but we're still on IT, so anybody? Motion's in order.
Make the motion. I move to approve contract number 1617-040, information technology hardware, a joiner contract with Insight Public Sector through U.S. Communities, contract number 4400006644. Mountain State's Networking, Cisco, through NASPO, National Association State Procurement Officials, contract number AR233. Dell, through NASPO, contract number AR602. Apple, through NASPO, contract number MNWNC-102. CDW Government LLC, through NIPA, National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance, and SHI International Corp., through NASPO WSCA, contract number ADSP0110000358-3, for an amount not to exceed $500,000 from various city accounts as approved in the fiscal year '17 budget.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion.
Could you pick that?
All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried and announced. Thanks very much, both of you. All right. We ready to do, you want to take a break? Why don't we take a break for 10 minutes here, then we'll get ready to do open space. So we'll be in recess for about 10 minutes here.
We're going to bring the meeting of the board's request back to order. We're now on item number 18. This is open space. This is to discuss and possible acceptance of the recommendation, the Open Space Advisory Committee to approve their work program for the fiscal year 2016-2017. Ms. Bollinger, you taking this one?
I will, Mr. Mayor. For the record, Dan Bollinger, Open Space Administrator. Attached to your staff report is the staff report from the Open Space Advisory Committee, as well as the work plan presented to them. It is an eight-page work plan. I won't walk through every item with the board, but there are certain items I would like to highlight and even provide updates since the time this was written. It is a fairly comprehensive report, so if anyone asks what does the Open Space Program do, I think I've listed just about everything. So there are 40 items on this list, and we only have three full-time staff, one of which is the park ranger. So we have quite a full plate. Beginning in the staff report, one of the items I'd like to highlight is the first item on that list, staffing. Starting with the new fiscal year, the Open Space Advisory Committee approved the transfer of funds from a part-time maintenance position to a part-time trails coordinator position. And throughout the past number of years, we have funded two part-time seasonal trail or park maintenance positions for the Open Space Program. With the addition of our new park ranger, a full-time ranger, he was able to take on some of those job tasks. So with the existing budget, it was my recommendation to the Open Space Advisory Committee, which they accepted, to now change those job tasks to a full-time position, which is where our needs are growing. In addition to that, it is in our 2016 unified pathways master plan as the number-one action item to have a pathways coordinator for Carson City. So 10 years later, I'm glad to say that we're making baby steps towards that action. Moving on down the list, and at any time, Mayor, if there's questions.
Sure. We'll jump in if we need to.
The next item I just would like to highlight is the volunteer opportunities and activities. Recently, we worked with Muscle Powered Trash Mob on a weed pool up at the Horse Creek Ranch Conservation easement. So that was the first time we have organized that complimentary activity, and it was successful and favorable by Muscle Powered. Horse Creek is under for sale right now, so we don't know if that project will continue, but we will have relationships with the new owner because of the conservation easement on the property.
And Ann, if I may, right above that, it says inmate labor. Can you just tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. Our department has access to two sources of inmates. One is our local jail, working with Sheriff Furlong and Don Quilicey. That crew travels around town. One of their primary duties is graffiti removal, but as time allows, they will work on other projects. And in addition to that, our department, the Parks Migration Department, has a contract with Nevada Division of Forestry with the conservation crews. So we have dedicated inmates that come to our department, and we work with them daily. Also, under voluntary activities, we do with work with the Kiwanis Clubs in town and the Scouts, and currently, we have two projects underway for the fall with the Eagle Scouts. Moving down to page two, under Wildlife Surveys, just an update related to the Southern Nevada Public Land Management Act grant. I'm pleased to tell the board that there were 18 applications submitted to the Parks Trails Natural Areas Program. The initial ranking, we were number nine. After the second ranking, we moved up to number five, and now it goes to Washington, DC for approval. So it looks like our project around Prison Hill, Silver Saddle, and the Old Buzzies Ranch will be funded. Moving down the list on page four.
Ann, just go back half a step. Talk a little bit about what a conservation easement is and what it does on Horse Creek Ranch and...
I will. So conservation easements are a deed restriction on the property. No conservation easement is the same. So every time we go down the road, or nonprofit organizations, or other government agencies, every easement is different based on what the property owner wants on that property, what they want, but also the agency who sets the restrictions. So in Carson City, we currently have two conservation easements. On Horse Creek Ranch, that property remains under private ownership, and Carson City holds the easement. And what that particular easement reserved was we restricted the building rights, so except for the two cabins on the property, only one more structure can be built. And in addition to that one structure, it cannot be built in the meadow. So what you see up in that area, that section of the meadow will be preserved in perpetuity. The other items in the conservation easement, so there's always allowed activities and prohibited activities. So the owner can conduct forced health practices, forced thinning if needed, but he cannot improve the property for gas, oil, wind energy development, commercial. He cannot operate commercial operations. He cannot have a lodge that makes money for mountain biking, snowmobiling. So commercial practices are not allowed on that property. You're welcome. And then the other easement we have in Carson City is on Prison Hill, Silver Saddle Ranch. We are the owner of that property, but BLM holds the easement on us, and so they can enforce the restrictions on that conservation easement.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. On page four, the Old Buzzies Ranch property, Duxon Limited was awarded a grant from the North American Wetlands Conservation Act for silver projects throughout the Carson River watershed. On Old Buzzies Ranch, they will conduct some wetland enhancement. They currently have this project out to bid, so we're likely to see that project under construction this fall. The next item, the Prison Hill Area Fifth Street Trailhead. Your report provides the update that the grant application was submitted to the recreational trails program for minimal trailhead improvements. I'm pleased to inform the board, we have been awarded that grant. We asked for $200,000. I don't have a confirmation yet if we have received the full amount, but we will at least receive something. The next item, Sierra Vista Lane. Sierra Vista Lane is a project that Public Works is working on. This is the Federal Lands Access Program grant that they received primarily for improvements on Sierra Vista Lane, but that grant application did require improvements in access to federal lands, as the grant requires. And so with the various trailheads there, the OHV trailhead on Sierra Vista Lane, then the Aquatic Trailhead just across the street, and they also looked at one right at the turnoff on, I think that's Pinion Hills Drive, right at Lloyd's Bridge. And so we are keeping in communication with Public Works because we are the owners of those lands of where the trailhead facilities are, so we're, we just want to work with them to make sure that whatever the design is, that it's complimentary to what we expect of trailhead facilities. I will move ahead to page six, and again, I can take questions on any of these items. The Nevada State Line to State Line Bike Way Project. We are partnering that project with Washoe County, Douglas County, and several other agencies up at the lake. I'm proud, again, to inform the committee that there is a groundbreaking ceremony on the North Demonstration Project scheduled on Friday, August 19th, up at the lake. Now jumping ahead to page nine, under the land transactions, there's a number of items I'd like to discuss here. One is the Lampa Lane Wetlands/Steinheimer Wetlands. This item just has been on our list forever. From what I understand, when the subdivisions were developed over near the Boys and Girls Club, that Fullstone Wetlands and Lampa Wetlands were supposed to be deeded to the city. Fullstone Wetlands, which is the ones immediately across from Boys and Girls Club was, this one was just never completed. And so with the addition of Stephanie Hicks, our new property manager, possibly this is a project that can be added her list to complete that transaction. The next two items...
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So was that dedication a requirement when all that was done, and it's just a paperwork issue that we need to finish?
I believe so. Okay. The Old Woods Ranch LLC and Schultz Investments, we will get into more detail on the next item, but those are active acquisitions for a conservation easement. The next item is W. Michael Fagan. This is the property exchange that we're working on. He owns 20 acres up on Highway 50, and we're looking at the property exchange with him, so that is active as well. And the final item on this list is water rights. When agricultural lands were purchased, and particularly the Old Buzzies Ranch property, we simply did not have the funding to purchase those water rights. But when those acquisitions came to that board, the board recognized it's important to keep those pastures green. That was the Open Space Plan, that was the community's vision for these properties, and so it was a commitment to find a way to keep these pastures green. And so there is just a little bit of work on this right now. We've met with the city manager to talk about ideas, and then later on this month, I'm meeting with Danny Roder and Darren Schultz to talk about options for the city, working with Public Works, and some of the wells that we have in the city, and other, just water that may be available that we can use to keep these agricultural lands green. Other options might be a grant with Dux Unlimited to purchase water rights, but it is a project that I like to keep in the forefront because the last thing we want to see is the water to disappear and have a wheat patch out there.
So how are we doing it now? Does someone else owns water rights, and they're letting us use?
Correct. So the Old Buzzies Ranch was two acquisitions, one from Mick Anderson and one from James Gerard, both of whom kept their water rights. James Gerard sold an option to Vidler Water Company, and so they, at some point in time, might finish that transaction. Mick Anderson still owns his water rights. When we purchased these properties, the purchase and sale agreement stated that as long as the owners keep the water rights and apply them to the land, that they also reserve the exclusive right to graze. So right now, those water rights are being applied up there.
Ann, there's a lot of discussion about Anderson Ranch on this vintage project. Anderson Ranch extended at one point in time to the river. Is any part of the property we're talking about here, is that the old Anderson Ranch? Is it Buzzies Ranch, or is that part of Anderson Ranch?
So in historic times, it is all the same family, different cousins at this point in time, but at one time, it was all one family.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting to know that the property on Little Lane is also part of the Anderson Ranch. I mean, because it extended all the way through Carson, all the way down to the river.
Correct, yes.
It's a fascinating bit of history, so, okay, thanks. All right, any other questions of Ms. Bollinger? Anybody? Public comment? Anybody? I think a motion's in order, then. Go ahead.
I move to accept the recommendation of the Open Space Advisory Committee and approve the work program outline for the fiscal year 2016-2017.
Motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried, and announced. Would you please take back to your committee, Open Space Committee from the board, the thanks for their hard work that they do. It's a very important committee for us.
Thank you. And Bruce Scott did say hi today.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let's take up the possible grant with the Forest Legacy Program. Going to move over there to the computer. Okay. This is item 18B.
I have a few slides here to help me walk through this agenda item, but also for the board and for the public to understand this agenda item as well. So I hope you can extend a little bit of patience for me as well. So this agenda item is to accept the recommendation from the Open Space Advisory Committee for this medal of a grant application to the Forest Legacy Program for a conservation easement on four parcels. APN 007-051-12 and 007-051-79 owned by the Old Woods Ranch LLC, APN 007-051-09 owned by Schultz Investments LLC, and the western 55 acres of APN 007-051-70 owned by Schultz Investments LLC. This motion is actually a little bit shorter than IT's was. Okay, so the first item I'd like to share with the board is what is the location of these properties, and how does it fit in with the big picture of Carson City Open Space? And so the map in front of you is the Westside Open Space Opportunities Map that the Open Space Program works off of. The properties in yellow are all private properties on the hillside. Green, the large green area, is Forest Service. Blue is Carson City, and particularly in this case, is owned by us, Carson City Open Space. And then in the middle here, not colored, is the Horse Creek Ranch Conservation Easement. So the two properties under discussion today is this section right here, 170 acres, Old Woods Ranch, and right adjacent to that is Schultz Investments. So we are talking about one grant. This is the Forest Legacy Program. It is a national grant that is eventually awarded out of Washington, DC, so we will compete nationwide. But on that grant, we will have two properties. The Old Woods Ranch, which is 130 acres and includes approximately 35 acres of the irrigated meadow. So again, this is the same meadow shared by Horse Creek Ranch. This is the southern third, and if this is completed, we have protected that meadow.
That also helps our aquifer recharge too, doesn't it?
It does, correct. And then the second is Schultz Investments LLC, 135 acres. And so a couple of reasons why we're combining these two properties into one grant. It is the same family members. With Schultz Investments LLC, there are five members of that family. Five of those members are the same, are part of the 12 under Old Woods Ranch. So we are working with the same family members. Historically, it was Schultz Ranch, again, for over 100 years, all in one family, and so they do have a desire to keep the preservation up in this area. Also, for the Forest Legacy Program, the larger the number of acres, the larger the property, the better it looks for them in the preservation of the landscape. So Old Woods Ranch does include the meadow that you can see from Kings Canyon Road. You cannot see the meadow from Highway 50, but you can see it from Kings Canyon Road. Back in 2010, we did submit a grant to a different agency for a conservation easement, so we did go down this road at one time. Unfortunately, it just was not funded at that time. There were other projects, and for that program, this just did not rank high enough, and it was not funded at that time. So we're hoping to complete this transaction with this grant. The second property, Schultz Investments, is a little bit higher than the meadow. It includes the forest, and in the background, it does have the scenic views down to Carson Valley. This property, since it does include more hillside than Old Woods Ranch, Old Woods Ranch includes the hillside and forest as well, but this is, can be seen from Highway 50, so it is a scenic impact to visitors traveling back and forth along the highway. So how does this fit into our big picture for the Open Space Plan? It is identified in a high-priority area for hillside protection, and it does meet several of our criteria for open space. And so some of those benefit is wildlife habitat. It would preserve that unfragmented landscape. Again, we were surrounded by Forest Service and open space, and for wildlife migration, having an unfragmented habitat is critical. Natural plant communities. According to the Nevada Division of Forestry, when the hillside, the further elevations burned in the 1920s, this area did not. So this actually has some of the oldest trees for Carson City. The scenic qualities, it can be seen from Highway 50. Some of it can be seen from Carson City, but primarily from the highway and from Carson Visibility, same thing. It is, it would be visible to all. Water protection. In our open space criteria form, how it defines water protection is, is it in a wellhead protection area? The answer to that is no, but it does provide water protection in the sense that there is at least one perennial stream, a couple ephemeral streams on both properties. And with that water, especially with the irrigated meadow, when those streams come down, soak into the meadow, it does recharge our aquifer. It also preserves the water quantity and quality that then flows down into Clear Creek. Potential benefit is accessibility. One of the questions that we're working on, both the family amongst themselves and us, is would there be public access? Because these properties remain under private ownership, it would not be unlimited public access. But the question is that Nevada Land Trust, who's assisting us on this transaction, one of the questions is, is trails in public access? At least at this point, the family is keeping that open. I cannot make any promises. And if there is access, it would be very limited, maybe just skirting the property so we can connect to trails elsewhere. But the property would not necessarily be unlimited public access. So the cost estimates, because it's a conservation easement, it's very difficult to give you a defined cost at this time. Conservation easements can range based on the restrictions placed on the land. So if the family wants unlimited development rights, then for the conservation values, that would be decreased. But the more restrictions they're willing to put on, the higher the value. And so just trying to get an idea of what a conservation easement would cost for us, as well as the family and their expectations, some of the numbers I was able to research is Carson City, for the purchase of the conservation easement on Horse Creek Ranch, we paid $6,274 per acre. Another comparison for Douglas County, there are eight conservation easements down in Douglas County. I just took the average of all those easements. Some of these did occur during the peak time for the real estate market. Some of those properties were also zoned, two-acre lots, so a development residential zoning will increase the value of those lands. Again, I'm just trying to work with some of the numbers that are available to us. So the average of those properties equaled 10,719 per acre. And then across the table, the third column, the conservation easement, that number was calculated based on the total acres. The Forest Legacy Program will fund up to 75%. So that is one of the reasons we went down this road with the Forest Legacy Program was the high percentage that they would pay. Another program that we all considered was through the Natural Resources Conservation Service. They also have a very high interest in protecting this property. They would only fund up to 50%. So we qualify for both programs, and then so Carson City, our quality of life, 25%. So you can see the dollar values of what it would cost us. So do we have the funding for this? Because the Open Space Program, Open Space Advisory Committee does have a high value for these properties, and we've been trying to work towards this goal, we have been saving money in our acquisition line item. So in fiscal year 1516, our remaining dollar amount is $537,000. This fiscal year, we still budgeted another $100,000, so we're adding to that bank. And so if these properties, if the cost estimates come higher to that $700,000 on the previous slide, then it will be staff's recommendation to the Open Space Advisory Committee to continue to put money into our acquisition line item, so we can finish this transaction. So the grant application, the dates, in August, this is our deadline too for this medal for this fiscal year. September, there's a state review committee. If they recommend it favorably, then in November, they will provide it to the National Committee, and then we would find out next spring. In the audience today are a few members of the family, and they are available to answer any of your questions on why they think this is important as well, and anything else. Are there any questions from the board?
Anybody? Any questions of Ann? I would ask the family members, if you want to say anything, we appreciate you working with us very much on trying to accomplish this and save what is, in my view, and I suspect a lot of people's view, is probably the prettiest place in the United States, so...
We agree. I am Sharon Miller. I am the manager of the Old Woods Ranch LLC. I am also a member of the Schultz Investments LLC. My oldest sister, Sandra McGowan, could not make it today, so she asked me to speak if you have any questions regarding Schultz Investments LLC. As Ann has very well put together this wonderful presentation, this has been in our family for around 100 years. Some of us are very attached to the property and would like to remain attached to the property and not have to give it up, and that is one of our main reasons why we are looking into a conservation easement. You know, it's just a basic thing that happens, the generations grow in numbers, and the generation before us was five members, now it's 12. I can't even tell you what the number of the fourth generation is. We've already working on a fifth generation, and I imagine in a few years, we've got a sixth generation going. But so it would be wonderful to be able to preserve this for the family. We have absolutely no plans of building any permanent living structure up there. Our plans are to put in, in fact, we've already designated it the JRS camp. JRS stands for our grandfather who bought it, John Robert Schulz, and it's mainly a
Because the open space program, Open Space Advisory Committee does have a high value for these properties and we've been trying to work towards this goal. We have been saving money in our acquisition line item. So in fiscal year 1516, our, our remaining dollar amount is 537,000. This fiscal year, we still budgeted another 100,000, so we're adding to that bank. And so if these properties, if the cost estimates come higher to that $700,000 on the previous slide, then it will be staff's recommendation to the Open Space Advisory Committee to continue to put money into our acquisition line item. So we can finish this transaction. So the grant application, the dates in August, this is our deadline too, for this middle, for this fiscal, fiscal year. September, this, there's a state review committee. If they recommend it favorably, then in November, they will provide it to the National Committee and then we would find out next spring. In the audience today are a few members of the family and they are available to answer any of your questions on why they think this is important as well and anything else. Are there any questions from the board?
Anybody, any questions of Ann? Would ask the family members, if you want to say anything, we appreciate you working with us very much on trying to accomplish this and save what is, in my view, and I suspect a lot of people's view, is probably the prettiest place in the United States, so.
We agree. I am Sharon Miller. I am the manager of the Old Woods Ranch LLC. I am also a member of the Schultz Investments LLC. My oldest sister Sandra McGowan could not make it today, so she asked me to speak if you have any questions regarding Schultz Investments LLC. As Ann has very well put together this wonderful presentation, this has been in our family for around 100 years. Some of us are very attached to the property and would like to remain attached to the property and not have to give it up. And that is one of our main reasons why we are looking into a conservation easement. You know, it's just a basic thing that happens, the generations grow in numbers. And the generation before us was five members, now it's 12. I can't even tell you what the number of the fourth generation is. We've already working on a fifth generation and I imagine in a few years, we've got a sixth generation going. But, so it would be wonderful to be able to preserve this for the family. We have absolutely no plans of building any permanent living structure up there. Our plans are to put in, in fact, we've already designated it the JRS camp. JRS stands for our grandfather who bought it, John Robert Schultz. And it's mainly a camp area where RVs and tents and we hope to put up like a picnic pavilion in it. As far as permanent structures, some members have talked about putting up like a very basic cabin area that is just to be meant to be used for anybody who wants to go up and doesn't want to have to cart up a, a tent or RV or something like that. But those are all just talk right now. But as I said, there would be nobody living on the ranch permanently. Currently, the only structure we really have is a falling down barn and corrals and.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
This is Jeff Schultz, who runs the cattle up there, my cousin. And so we are very interested in getting this CE for our property and for our future generations as well, so that they can enjoy it as well. If you've got any further questions, I'll try to answer them.
Go.
So I just want to be, I want to be clear in understanding when we do the conservation easement, but what access residents in Carson City would have to, to enjoy those lands? I want to be clearer on, or do we not have that decided yet?
I'll, I'll answer first and then Sharon. It has not been decided. Right now, the family, in their questionnaire, some said trails, some have not. I don't know if that means private trails or public trails. At least right now, with some of the members, the conversation's on the table, but I cannot promise anything. So public access is not guaranteed. Do you want to add anything?
Well, yeah, I'd, I'd pretty much have to echo that. We've always been very private. We have a couple main concerns about having public access. One is the cattle up there. We don't want anybody disturbing the cattle and running them about. The other is a fire danger. Yes, we are starting to work on the stewardship with NDF to clean up our forest areas and such, but there will always be fire danger up there and we really want to, within our family, we've always been very strict about that sort of thing and not doing fires and not just flipping your cigarette butts out or anything like that. So we've even written up an addendum to our LLC operating agreement for our family members to be aware of this fire danger and such. So those are, are the real major things for us that, that we really have to think about as to what kind of public access we would be willing to give. I don't think we would ever have a motorized access, but we'll see. We're talking about it and that's the good thing.
Yeah, just to note, conservation easements do not grant public access. Typically, it's stripping development rights off of a property. So you're, you're actually purchasing the development rights unless of course, public access is negotiated into the easement. So I do have concerns because we have a trailhead adjacent to this and we're trying to get trail connectivity going north. And so Ann and I talked about that and there are other alternatives to getting trail connectivity. So Ann, if you could just kind of briefly go over, if we can't come to terms on public access through these lands, what would we do to connect trails?
I will go back to the initial map. And what this map unfortunately doesn't show you at this time. So right in this area where the peak is highlighted on the map is the state lands parcels. And those are the parcels that came to the Board of Supervisors several months ago to rezone because the state has a direction from the governor to sell these properties to fund the Stewart Indian School. And so, but that is the underpass to Highway 50. Adjacent to that is Michael Fagin's. And then to the left is another private parcel as well. Michael Fagin's has some of the most level topography, which is one of the reasons we're looking at acquiring that for the trail. And within this area, the best topography that does flow to the east, if we can connect with the Forest Service land in Voltaire Canyon. Alternatively, you can see that open space does own all the property to the north. And so that could be the Plan B. It is steeper, we can build switchbacks. We have done it before for the Ash to Kings Trail. So that, that is an option. Thank you.
If I could speak to that as well, I don't know how Michael Fagan feels about having a trail through his property, but I do know that the Schultz Investments, which is to the east of Old Woods Ranch, that we're also talking about putting into this CE, would be open to more public access along there.
I guess I didn't understand that Sharon, tell me that again. How, how would that work?
Schultz Investments is the property just to the east and a little bit to the north. And it's not the meadow land, it's not where the cattle go. So we would be more willing to have public access through Schultz Investments as part of the CE. And you are correct, sir Bogalski? I'll try. Regarding the CE not requiring public access, but as I understand it, it's one of the things that puts us higher on the list to obtaining the CE nationwide. So that it is kind of an important thing we need to consider.
I guess, and I, I know you guys are still talking about this, but what, how would you get from the trailhead? You'd have to go through Old Woods Ranch to get to that, if you were going to use that as an access point, wouldn't you or not? Or am I missing something there?
Well, that's why I brought up Michael Fagan's property. I don't know if he is, would be allowing public access through there. It would be up and around and then through and then over to Voltaire Canyon.
Oh, I see, okay.
It could also go up to King's Canyon Road.
Okay, all right.
And Ann, when we were looking at the estimates of the dollars, that's, doesn't reserve any for the Fagan exchange if we're short a little bit in the exchange may also have to come out of those dollars. But timing wise, would we have the opportunity to have another 100,000 for the next fiscal year budget? Would it be close?
Correct. The dollar amounts I provided to the board is our total acquisition. So we do have to consider Michael Fagan's property acquisition as well. This fiscal year, we did allocate more funding in the professional services item because we would like to go through a site development plan for Silver Saddle. So we increased that budget, I think 50, 60,000. So that's a one-year increase. So as we look at future budgets, we, we do have the flexibility of moving money from different line items to help us accomplish these transactions.
If, if you know, what's the history of that area and the development of Carson City and the, the area from past?
Well, the history that I know as far back as it goes, goes to the Comstock load when it was a lumber camp. In fact, where we have our JS camp set up was the main, a, a community up there for the lumber camp to cut down all the timber for the Comstock load. And then once they cut it all down, then it went into ranching into the meadow and stuff. The person who owned it before, my grandfather, was a Mr. Woods and there are remnants of his cabin up there still.
So it started out as a logging area and then turned into a ranching area? That's fascinating, okay, all right. Public comment, anybody? Want to weigh in? No? Okay, all right. Board, are we ready to? Okay, let's give it a shot.
I move to accept the recommendation from the Open Space Advisory Committee for the submission of a grant application to the forest legacy program for a conservation easement on four parcels, assessor's parcel number 007-051-12 and 007-051-79, owned by the Old Woods Ranch LLC. And APN 007-051-09, owned by Schultz Investment LLC. And the western 55 acres of assessor's parcel number 007-051-70, owned by Schultz Investments LLC.
There's a motion and second on the motion discussion. Hearing, go, discussion's in order.
I'm so sorry, something just occurred to me. So the city will own the conservation easement if we get the grant, but could the owners of the property record their own easement without having something purchased and eliminate the development rights? Is that something they could do themselves?
That, that's a good question. I don't know that answer. But one of the benefits that this family is looking at too, is the funding that they would acquire from the purchase of the conservation easements. They would like to put in an endowment account that would help them manage the properties.
So I get that, but at the same time, they can preserve the property by recording their own deed and we don't have to spend the money. If we're going to get public access in the trade for it and then to do the endowment, all of that makes sense to me. So I just have some reservations about paying them for an easement that keeps it in their family and where do we get the public benefit?
Sure, excuse me. That's okay. One of the options that has always been on our, in the back of our minds that we don't really want to go there, is that we would sell it. And we would most likely sell it to a private property who could pay us a good amount for it. So you would lose everything then.
And, and a portion of the property is currently on the market, correct? The 220 acres?
That's of Schultz Investments, that's currently on the market, yes.
Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff Schultz. I'm one of the 12 cousins now. And in regards to what you were saying Laurie, what you gain is a continuous view of, you know, the Horse Creek area and the meadows adjoining it. It's just like what you've already purchased with Michael Fagan's property. Even though he doesn't have public access, views are still going to remain phenomenal from, you know, King's Canyon, which is a main viewing point. Have you ever been through there? That's, you know, that's about as big as it gets right there. So the advantages of it are huge. It's, to, to purchase the conservation easement is a preservation and that's really what we're doing with it. And like you were saying, the funding is for endowment care. So our families, our kids in the future don't have to come out of pocket to try to, you know, keep cows going, keep a ranch manager up, things like that. Trying to look forward.
All right, thank you both to you. All right. Further discussion on the motion? I don't hear any or see any on the motion. All in favor, stick your hand up by saying aye. Aye, pose nay. Carry it unanimously, thanks very much. Go finish the negotiations, see where it goes and thanks very much. Thanks for the history lesson on the ranches up there. It is, you know, from King's Canyon up there, it is one of the most beautiful views. I mean, you can't beat that looking over Horse Creek Ranch and looking down at Job's Peak and that area. It's, it's unbelievable. I mean, it's something that we ought to keep for ourselves. So, all right, all right, all right. Let's take up fire hazardous waste, hazard mitigation.
How you guys doing? For the record, Bob Schrean's Fire Chief Emergency Manager. This is Stacy Belt, Deputy Emergency Manager. And we're here to go over the, every five years, Carson, Carson City Hazard Mitigation Plan. I'm sure you've all read it page to page riveting. All right, probably slept well, okay?
Laurie told me she read every word.
It was well-written, I didn't read it.
It was well-written. Once we got it onto you, it takes a long time to get through Granicus with the, the 180 pages or whatever we got, so.
341.
There you go, so. Just a couple of things, this is, we have to do this every five years. This allows us to get our hazard mitigation grant funding money also under FEMA. If we have a problem where we have to get reimbursable funds, if we don't have this plan in place, the city won't be able to apply or receive those funds. That's why we did this. This was started under, we got a grant for this process with Rob Anderson and they also helped in, in doing this proposal for us. And we got a grant through the Emergency Management Division. So that was, and this was a long process. This is the first time I've sat on this and we had to have numerous meetings and numerous times of meeting everybody and getting all this stuff done. And if you guys look on, on page 34, you can see just the, some of the city divisions that we had there, the city departments that were, everybody was in, in cooperation with. If you read through, we had numerous meetings, we had an open public forum on this, we've had input from pretty much all the folks around and everybody and all the different agencies that, that are cooperating with Carson City. This was also sent back to FEMA. FEMA authorized this and approved it, sent it back to us for you guys' signature. So that's kind of the Reader's Digest version of about a year's worth of work.
So this has been through FEMA already?
It's already been to FEMA.
Okay, so, and they're okay with it?
Yep.
So why would we not be okay with it then?
Well, you should be okay with it. If you say no, you're not going to get any funds, so it's really.
That's what I'm saying, I mean. You've got a little bit of a box there, but that's okay.
Yeah, pretty much, we boxed you in, that's how it works. But one of the things I do want to bring up, if you look on page 54, we have a couple hazard ratings here in Carson City. And number one is actually earthquakes, number two is wildfire, three is floods, severe weather, landslides and acts of violence. Earthquakes, if there's a stereotypical guy for earthquakes, we have a representative from University of Nevada Reno that shows up here. And, and if you want to talk about a guy who knows everything about everything about earthquakes, that came and evaluated us, pretty good guy. However, one of the things he did say is that, that, and it was new to me, that Carson City, we sit on a big gigantic crack, if you will. So we are pretty high for, for earthquakes. It's a high priority in Carson City. We're going to be the highest in Nevada. So with that, we just want to give a public shout out to make sure you guys are prepared for some earthquakes because if we do have a major earthquake here in Carson, it's going to take us a while to get to everybody. So just make sure on the prepared side, you have your supply of water and supplies there if we do have a, a big earthquake. So it was pretty interesting because some of the things in the fault lines that we have through here were pretty amazing. I was like, I, like wow, I didn't know that either. So some of the things like for Lake Tahoe, we had to bring up a bunch of issues with those guys. And if they ever have, do have a big earthquake at Tahoe, our little land section that we have sitting on Lake Tahoe will get hit with water and take out all the trees and all the stuff that was there. So that's kind of an interesting procession. Obviously, the next one down is wildfire. Luckily, we haven't had any here in, in a while, which is good, knock on wood. I know, right? However, I know I say that today, but just so you guys don't know, we do have crews all over the place right now. There are fires all the way around us. We have a crew sitting in Vacaville right now. We've got some overhead teams on the guys on the other side of Virginia City. And we also have some guys coming back from Idaho. So our group's all out there right now. Floods, good thing we've been in a drought, we haven't had floods in a while. But I don't know if you guys saw the news yesterday in Arizona, thousand year flood. They got three hours, three to six inches of rain within an hour, pretty crazy there. Last summer, we had some flash flooding here, so we've made some preparations from before. We're a flood-safe city. We have, some of our folks are prepared for any of those types of incidents that are here. So hopefully, we don't have that. And then the, the one in here, we had to put in there for landslides. Now, the last big one was, you know, when Slide Mountain fell, we don't have to worry about that too much. But if we do get a lot of rain and weather and if you look at some of the slides where we had some wildfires, wildfires a few years ago, then that's an issue for us and that's why it's on this list. And then the other top five is issue basic acts of violence and we have that no matter where you live. So we had to put that in because of the, you know, the IHOP and some of the other stuff that goes on within the city. That's kind of it in our Reader's Digest version of this. And if you guys have any questions, I'll let Stacy answer them all.
Brad, go.
Bob, in section eight, which is the, the potential actions. There are quite a few references to constructing improvements along with timelines to construct those improvements, but, and, and potential funding sources. But Laurie and I talked about this yesterday. Our understanding is that you have to include all of this in the plan because if you miss something in the plan and we have an issue that comes up, then you cannot address it because FEMA. because FEMA won't allow you to.
Correct. Right. We have to plan forward for any of this stuff.
Right. So, just because it's in the plan doesn't mean that we're necessarily planning on making that improvement within that timeline since we don't actually have the funding for it. But we need to be prepared and have it in the plan. So, if there is an emergency or some extraordinary circumstance that happens, then we can deal with it. Is that correct?
Correct. Plus two, oh, we'll go ahead.
In addition to that, it allows us to apply for federal funding and grants. If it's not in the plan, then we can't even apply.
All right. So, under the hazard mitigation planning side of, through DEM, then we can apply as those priorities come through on their grant processes and then we're able to apply based on this plan.
Any other questions? Public comment? Anybody? Okay. Motion's in order.
Resolution number?
2016 R-21.
I move to adopt resolution number 2016 R-21, a resolution adopting and approving the Carson City Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Motion and a couple of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pos nay. Carry unanimous. Thanks very much, folks.
Thank you.
Keep us safe. All right. Let's take up item 20, historical tax deferment issue for Christopher White. Hope, Ms. Sullivan, you're doing this?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Section 2102040 of the Carson City Municipal Code states that any site or structure designated as historic by the Board of Supervisors shall be eligible for the open space use assessment. The subject property is a contributing property in the city's historic district. The property is, has been subject to a historic tax deferment since 1995. The property is before you today because of a change of ownership. This request was reviewed by the Historic Resource Commission at their meeting of July 14th and they recommend the approval of the deferment upon finding the property to be in conformance with the Secretary of the Interior standards, the Carson City historic guidelines, and the Historic Resource Commission policies. So, the staff is recommending approval and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Lori, anything?
How much of an abatement is the tax? I was trying to find it, I'm sorry, but I'm like, what is the tax abatement?
Actually, I don't know. I did read section 2102040 and I didn't see it called out either.
Oh, fuck it.
And so, I can't tell you. I did put down that there was not a fiscal impact since this has been subject to the deferment since 1995.
You can get me the information later, but I'm just interested in what it is.
Yeah, on page of the agenda item, on page 201 and 203, there's a couple of pictures of the house and it has a fence out in front. Is that a wood fence or a vinyl fence?
Actually, I was out there and, but I was out there in July. I don't recall it being a vinyl fence, so I will answer your question. That's wood because I know when I was out there, it didn't strike me any particular way.
Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. HRC wouldn't have recommended it if it had a vinyl fence out front.
Just want to make sure so we're not going back to that. Thank you.
All right. Good comment. Okay. All right. Public comment? Anybody? Continuation of a tax deferment? Motion's in order.
I move to approve a request from Christopher White for a historical tax deferment on property located within the historic district located at 506 West Spears Street, APN 003-232-01.
On the, there's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pos nay. Carry unanimous. Thank you very much. Thanks, folks. All right. Let's take up 20B. This is the Charles Abbott Associates contract. Sean, good afternoon, good morning to you. How you doing?
Good morning.
All right.
Good morning. Lee Plummel, Community Development Director. I'll introduce this item and then I'd like to, in combination with Representative Sean Keating, the building official and Charles Abbott Associate employee. What I'd like to do with this presentation is, is give you kind of an overview of, of the contract and services, a report on the building services budget for the last fiscal year, and then turn it over to Sean to talk about the contract in a little more detail and specifically their performance measures and their goals that they were assigned to in the contract. And then we can take questions at the end of that to kind of, if you have some detailed questions on any of it, to ask those questions in the context of the entire presentation. Again, the purpose of this item is report, report on the, on the board, on the building budget for the last fiscal year, which is the first complete fiscal year that we've been able to kind of do, run the budget by when the contract was. Because we've been under contract with Charles Abbott Associates since September of 2014 and we're here before you today because the contract expires September 2 of this year. It does automatically renew for up to five additional years if neither party provides notice of termination. We had a meeting back in January of this year where we presented a report, an update from Charles Abbott Associates on the, on the status of meeting the measures and the direction we were given in our, and what we told you was, was after this fiscal year, we'd come back with this report. So, that's the purpose of this today. And just as a reminder, the building, building fund is an enterprise fund, so all permit fees collected go back strictly to the services provided by the Building Department for, for building permits. Just, just a couple of slides to give you a high overview of things. So, again, Charles Abbott Associates is, are contract, under contract employees that provide the building, building services. They're paid as a percentage of building permit fees that we collect. So, on good years, the city makes more money, they make more money. In, in lower years, it's the opposite. We don't make as much and certainly then, then they don't make as much. We have, our, our goal is to integrate these personnel seamlessly into the Building Department. I think we've done that. Most people have no idea. Our, our three full-time employees are in the picture up there that you see on a daily basis, the building official and inspector and, and a counter tech. There are some backup employees that are included in that that are in occasionally, but they have their city name tags on. The idea is that it, that it works seamless, seamlessly to the public, that they look, that they are just city employees. Speaking of the staff that they provide, Sean will probably cover this a little more detail, but you have the, we have the three employees full-time on a day-to-day basis that are in the up, first three bullets there on the left side, which is the building official, a building inspector, and a permit tech that are, that are there every day. And they're the ones that are in the pictures there. Charles Abbott does provide backup and additional assistance. Sometimes, some days we'll have two inspectors in when permit inspections are picking up. So, they'll bring in the, a part-time inspector to do inspections. Or when the permit tech is out, they have backup to come in and fill that position and do plan checks. And when Sean is out as the building official, they have backup that can come in and, and be in the building and be available to the public during that time. In addition to, to those personnel, they have off-site help for plan reviews in particular. They do structural reviews. They have engineer PE that they send plans to for structural elements, which is something that in the past, for, for larger plans like that, we, the city would send out and, and pay for contractor services for that. And then they also have plan, other plan reviewers on call for both, both building and fire. So, this is provided in your packet. This is an overall summary of kind of the, of the, of the budget. The expenditures and revenues. Tried to kind of break it down to, to break it between fees collected versus what goes directly to the CAA contract payments there. In, in the last fiscal year, we collected over a million dollars. So, the chart down in the lower right there is you're kind of putting this all in context. The far, the bar on the far right is the total valuation of building permits that came in, in the last fiscal year. That's not directly, it's, it's not directly related to the fees collected, but it, it is very much correlated with it because the fees collected are a percentage of that. It varies between residential and commercial, but you can kind of see that, that the fees collected from building permits would general, generally follow that same, that same graph. So, in the last, you know, six years previous to that, we've, we've been way down. This was a, this was a good year, back towards probably what you might consider historic averages for, for fees collected. The city saw, the city's profit or the city's net revenue and all the building permit fees collected was about 35% of the, of the total building permit fees collected. And again, the services that are provided by CAA were noted on the previous page. So, the other income includes engineering fees and some other fees. At this point, I, going down the list there, I would note that, so, when the wastewater treatment facility or whatever the appropriate term for that is, was, when that permit came in, that was a very large permit fee that month. And understanding that, Charles Abbott and Associates, we know, came to us with this idea, we have been working to try to implement electronic plan check, trying to consider where those, where those fee monies would come from to be able to implement that. And they, they offered this donation of about $41,000 to fully implement electronic plan fee, submittal and plan review citywide. So, that's being implemented and we're trying to get that implemented by the start of next fiscal year. That includes the buying large screen monitors so all the city reviewers and building department reviewers can see the plans better. Those, those have been ordered through IT and Sean has continued to work with IT on the other aspects of that, all the way through online payments. So, that's, that's a program that we're very excited about. And then just going down the list, other expenses that were part, that were part of it resulted last year in a net building fund income of $70,000. So, that, and, and I think, I think this year, we've budgeted, I think Nancy's in the back there, if we, if you have, if you do end up having any detailed budget questions, but we budgeted for next year. So, kind of with the building fund, our revenues and expenditures totally based on how much building permits come in. So, it's always a guess. I, I think next year's were based on the projections at the time earlier in 2016 and would somewhat mirror this, maybe be a little bit less. But if we had the same year as last year, we would, we would expect another net building fund income of about that. The importance of that is that as we have a net building fund income surplus, we can then start to reduce some of the expenditure from the general fund for those employees that are actually doing building permit reviews and should technically under a, under an enterprise fund be charged to those funds. They're still in, up until, even with that last budget year, there was some general fund, technically some general fund support built within that because there are general fund employees who are doing building permit services. So, the better that, that number is, the more in the future we can reduce the expense to the general fund for some employees. So, that concludes my portion, that overview. And I would like to turn it over to Sean at this time to talk about some of the performance measures. But, so, again, as part of this, we're looking at the contract and what we want out of this item is some direction from the Board of Supervisors on the continuation of this contract. It's important to note, as they go into the measures, that city staff feels that they have been in compliance, they've been a, a good partner and have integrated seamlessly. But more importantly is the customer service and the perception of the customers. To that end, we've had a customer surveys. It's very hard to get people to fill them out, but some have and we've had overwhelmingly positive support there. And also importantly is the building community. And we have, you know, we've talked to Aaron West with the Builders Alliance and their, and their membership and they've expressed, I see he's not here today, but they've expressed-
Right there, it's right there.
Whoa. You weren't, you just, he snuck, snuck in. I looked past you there, Aaron. Okay. Well, I'll let, I'll let Aaron, I'll let Aaron. From the contractors, we have heard good support for, for the, for the people that we have in place now and the services that they're providing. I'll let Aaron speak for the, officially for the Builders Alliance. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sean Keating, the building official, and have him go over some of the performance measures and what they've been doing in the past year and kind of what the future holds for CAA and the Building Division moving forward.
Welcome, Sean.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and supervisors. For the record, Sean Keating, Chief Building Official. Also, first time I'll say, is a CAA employee. We don't say that often because there's not a need for it. As Lee mentioned, we try to integrate and assimilate within the city staff as, as well as possible, not just with the city staff, but also with the builders as well and the, and the owners, the private owners out there. But before I start, I wanted to talk about a couple of things. One is looking back, looking back when this agreement was really negotiated and talked about. There was talk about customer satisfaction, customer service orientated. Charles Abbott and Associates prides himself on providing that customer service that nobody else can. Looking back now, a couple of years ago when I sat, a year and a half ago when I talked with you about, let the citizens of Carson City decide that, I really meant it. And I think at the time, you didn't really know how I planned to do that. I think in the last two years, we, we provided that service that we talked about. We, we not only provided it, I think the quality, and that's what I wanted to really talk about, was the quality of the plan review process within the, the professional people have not been minimized. So, we actually moved forward providing the same, or actually accelerated the customer satisfaction and still maintain the quality of, of the actual projects that go, go out. And I would venture to say that when you talk to a lot of them, you will find out that that quality exists, the satisfaction of the community exists. And I'd like to just point out one example of how we did that compared to two years ago. One contractor, because I get a lot of phone calls, which is very good because of the fact we, we relate with that. It was a four-day-long weekend and the contractor had, they had workers or laborers booked already for that time period. There was a problem with his setup and his plans, which would have put him about a week delay. He called in to us because we provided him our phone number and said, I got this problem. We did a site assessment of what the problem was. We made a couple of phone calls to different departments that were involved in the approval process. And he was continuing to go on his own, which did not allow him to have construction delay. That's the type of customer service we're talking about. And I think that's what you wanted and we brought that here to Carson City. But the main emphasis I wanted to go was, the quality of services have, have not been compromised. And I assure you that when you talk with others, you will find that nothing's been let go. It's just the different approach of how to do the day-to-day business for those people that we serve.
Sean, can I just add that I got a call from John Uheart yesterday, got an email from Darren Berger yesterday, and they praised, highly praised how the Building Department is handled best anywhere. Just so you know that.
Thank you. Thank you. And, and I'm glad to hear about that. This is one fault of my own and, and is that my perception of the Building and Safety Department should be where it's seamless and nobody has to say anything good because 90% of the time, the only time we hear something is when something's extremely bad. So, a lot of times I, I try to persuade people who walk up to me and say, hey, this is working out, this is really good. Because of the fact that we're an outsourced entity, but we're part of this team in Carson City, I don't want to divide us. I want to keep us all as united as one. So, a lot of times when I talk to those private or professional peoples out there and they, they talk about that, that's exactly what I talk about. Thank you very much because it's very kind and humbling. But I still forget sometimes that we need some kind of recognition and, and show where we're at. But that would, being said, I want, I wanted to take two minutes and talk briefly about the staff. We, we integrate well, but the staff here in Carson City are awesome. Nobody in this staff, in, in the city staff ever, they needed leadership and guidance on how to be customer service orientated, but they're always acceptable to change and different opinions. Kind of one thing I always talk about, don't talk about the problem unless you're willing to talk about a solution. I think the staff has changed that mindset. If there's a problem, let's talk about the solution instead of trying to assign fault with that issue. Because there's, there's problems, you can find problems with almost anything. But I wanted to mention that the integration with the staff has been phenomenal. It's, it's awesome. It has really, really come along. With that being said, what I wanted to do is- With that being said, what I wanted to do is cover the performance standards, or let me cover brief about the technology fund that was established last year. Lee started to talk about that. We're currently, we're in the process of designing the online system through our IT department to accept plans through electronic plan check or plan review process. We're hoping to have the actual test cycles running in the month of September and November and have something really that we can use at the end of this year so we start out the calendar year. Those types of things require a lot of run-through, dry run, to make sure they work. If they don't, the one time it doesn't work, it, it doesn't seem as good as it should have been. The last thing I want to talk about is the ASBIL process. If you remember in January, I talked about some of the things that we're moving forward next year was this ASBIL process. An ASBIL process is a process, the use, when people have things that were unpermitted during a time period without their knowledge or knowledge, that allows them to maximize the use of their own property. And I'll give you an example. I've, I've used over probably two dozen cases of this over the last year. Somebody goes to sell their house and realizes a room wasn't permitted, they bought it that way, no fault of their own. They would come to the city and say, how can I correct this problem? In the past, we really didn't have anything to tell them except to get it permitted. What I designed was an ASBIL process where they can go to a professional registered designer, take that problem that they have, look at the cost benefit of getting it permitted and work towards compliance within the city and get it on the books so that they can move forward. And it's a big deal for a lot of them because it becomes a negative factor on the sale, for the price of the sale, equity in the home, taxation. There's many avenues that this ASBIL process branches off into it. But I just wanted to explain, last year, I talked about how to come up with something to, to breach that gap, and this is what I came up with, and it seems to be working very well for the citizens. And some people elect not to do it. I've had probably four or five cases where the citizen decide that they would remove it by suspending the dollars going forward with this process. But it's a decision that they had where they can look at what, on the city's behalf, we can do to get them to the point where, where they can maximize their profit for their property. So those are the three things I talked about last year. But let me cover the, the performance standards. I just want to highlight some of them. I wrote this out with the mindset that I'm self-evaluating myself, but I think as a building official, you have to have the pulse of the building community to identify what you do right and what you do wrong. I think I very well qualified for doing this. I bounced this off of a lot of people to see if they think my assessment is real and adequate. But I think in every case, the three major ones, being plan check and the permit, permit streamlining, customer service and inspection services, we are exceeding all of our marks. And the reason I say that is because CAA's philosophy is exceed the minimum, and I look at everything as what can we do better? Where can we go from, from today? With the plan check and the permitting system, this year, we did probably three times more over-the-counter permits than we've done in years past. It takes a lot of effort and energy because of the fact when somebody has an over-the-counter permit, it's usually time-sensitive. I can review it while they wait, and we can issue the permit and inspect the thing in the field. It's becoming word-of-mouth with the public, is saying that you can get this approved and it's not a hard thing to do. So I think next year, I would actually probably see that this would be a, an additional advantage for everyone. In our permitting time, our permitting time or our review time are far exceeding what the city standard had in their performance measure. It was fifteen day, fifteen days on new construction, ten days on tenant improvements. We're well below that, probably by seven to eight days for tenant improvements. New construction could be a little bit difficult. We've reduced some of that time, but we've reduced that by one of the biggest projects we just issued this month was the ninety thou, ninety-three thousand square foot assisted care facility. There was over a year worth of talk back and forth with designers because designers aren't local anymore, designers in New Mexico, Arizona. Those kind of conversations and emails and, and pre-construction-type meetings actually helped that plan get developed and reviewed in that time that we talked about, fifteen days. Nine times out of ten, if that happened without those activities, that process would have been extremely longer. I wanted to talk about, there needs to be more outreach, code knowledge. When we talked last year about the energy conservation code, we also talked a little bit the wildland urban interface code. Those are two codes that are dramatically misunderstood in, in Carson City. Last year, we conducted three open house or workshops with designers, and we opened it to the public if the public wanted to come in. We didn't really have the response by the, the public themselves because of the fact that nobody ever really sees the need until they need, need it there. But from the designer's point of view, we had sixty-plus designers that attended, plus we had real estate people come and actually attended. Because of the change of occupancy, there was questions about that, so it, it turned out to be a great workshop. But those are types of activities that we did last year, and we need to continue them to help coordinate that permit process and make it as, as seamless as possible. The second one is, is customer service. The customer service, I really wish it was the first one because that's what we strive on with CAA, customer service. We recognized that this year, the phone never stopped ringing, which is a good thing. In the building community, when the phone stops ringing, it, it, it's not really a good thing. Our phone continuously rings, all different types of questions from all different areas. So we, what we did is we implemented a inspection hotline where, you know, work with technology, the contractors or the private owners can now email or leave a voicemail for their inspections, which would allow the phone line to remain open at the same time. So it's just a different way of thinking. We're, we're about four or five months into that process where it, it seems to be working, and, and initial feedback I get from a lot of the professional folks is they like it because, you know, during the hours of eight to five or daylight, they're out there working, doing what they do best, and they don't have time to do the administrative thing. When they get back to their truck or back to home, that's when they can schedule or arrange their inspections at that time. The one thing I wanted to talk about is handouts and, and literature to try to educate and inform the public. I find, and, and not all the time, I, I will sit with you and I always give you good news, sometimes bad news. What we wind up doing is we give a lot, a lot of handouts to people so they can just know exactly what we're trying to do. The expectations are well-known. However, because of shortfalls within the professional communities, not all owners can, can do, do it themselves. So a lot of times, what we have to look at is, what are they, they trying to get us to design vices hiring a designer to do? And it's a, it's a thin line, very thin line. And what I'm talking about is when an owner comes in and says, well, I don't want to hire somebody to do, I want you to tell me about it. Our handouts aren't designed for that. They're designed to tell them what needs to be on there, but we provide them every assistance and guidance through the internet and different means so that they can get that information about the design requirements or seek professional, professional help. That again is one thing that you can do to actually help and streamline that permit process so it, it actually works smoother. Quality control. The one thing I did a few months back was I started Kaizen Two, and I don't think anybody's ever talked about this officially. We were one of the permit process, was one of the first Kaizen with the city. I looked at the Kaizen information with some of the main players within the permit center, and we looked at what processes we could do that were already changed, but can be changed better now that we ran them. Those hopefully we can implement in the future, but there were some good ideas about Kaizen Two, integrate that back into what we're doing every day. And the last one is the inspection services. I talked, I talked briefly about it at the beginning, the inspection services. That's where really we, we, we meet the public. That's where people see us as city employees. We do other things that most jurisdictions wouldn't do. For example, owner builders who work during the day, they don't sit around and wait eight, nine o'clock in the morning till five o'clock in the afternoon for us. What we try to do is give them a one-hour window when we're going to be there so that people aren't sitting around waiting for things to happen. And with the owners that I'm talking about, what we wind up doing is schedule, if they're working, we schedule them late in the day after, after hours to try to accomplish those so that they seem, they get that inspection done, but it's also in the case where it's more accommodating to them. With that being said, I wanted to talk about the future, where we're going. And probably next year, when we talk about our performance standard, you'll hear my future first and give you a report of how I did it and then where we're going to go again. The EPC, the electronic plan check system is, is vital for this community. The, the, the customers, the designers or the customers that we support are, are at that level. We need to catch up to them. It's not vice versa. So, so that's extremely important that we do that. Also, what the EPC brings in, that Kaizen One and Kaizen Two, things that create more efficiency. So that's the thing we're going to be working on next year. Also, we realized the hotel motel code compliance issue is very important to the city. That's, we'll participate in that. And again, more demand for workshops with the citizens and professionals as needed to get out there and talk about these codes and, and how they relate to their situation. I believe in meeting them, not waiting for them, if that makes sense to you. I think that's, that's the, the essence of this. And the last thing I'll talk about next year, and you'll see this every time, because there's never enough options for customers at the counter. Times keep changing, technology changes, and what we need to do a lot of times is develop things based off our customer needs. So with that being said, I, these are the performance measures or evaluation assessment that I did, and I'm open to any questions you have about it.
I think there are some questions up here. Brad, go.
Not necessarily questions, just some comments. I was contacted by John Anderson with John Anderson Construction, who just wanted, read into the record that he's been a contractor here for decades, and he wanted us to know that the service that is currently being provided is not only the best that he has ever experienced in the decades that he's been working here, but is better than any other surrounding county in, in northern Nevada. And in fact, our surrounding counties are now looking at our program to use it as a template on how to provide this service correctly. And I can also say that our office, you know, we interact, Sean, with you weekly and many times on a daily basis. And, you know, your, your knowledge and, and service has been invaluable for us in making sure that we can properly guide clients who are looking to bring businesses here or purchase properties here so that they do understand change of use and what they can properly use a, a property for. So, thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
I also had an opportunity at my, at my office to deal with your inspectors on a water heater issue. You know, I got, they were very good, very professional, and I learned, you know, you got to make sure that your contractor is doing the right thing on some of these things. So you, they were very, very professional about it, didn't cut an edge, didn't do anything, and made sure that every screw was screwed in just right. So it's all right, it's good. And I want to echo what Supervisor Pankowski and Supervisor About said, is I too have received numerous accolades about the, the building department. And I, and I can't remember, I was trying to think while you were talking here, I can't remember getting a complaint in the last year, year and a half, about anything going on over there. And usually, you know, when I was first elected mayor, I pretty well got them routinely. So, you know, it seems like things are working pretty well there, and I know that that's probably a lot of attributable to your background and being one of the nation's finest, so. Right. Okay. Any public comment? Aaron, did you want to say anything?
Good morning, Mayor. Supervisors, for the record, Aaron West, Nevada Builders Alliance. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, I really want to thank the supervisors and, and staff for, you know, putting us in a position to participate in the process where we ended up with Charles Abbott. Going back and, and, you know, looking at, at that, there were really three things that we were looking for. One was, first and foremost was accountable customer service. It's one thing to have customer service, but to have it be accountable. And the system that is in place and the, and the job that's being done by Sean and his crew over there is impeccable. If I could echo some of the comments, I, I look at myself, typically I'm, I'm kind of like a Yelp sounding board, right? You get all the bad comments, you don't always get that many good comments. And so I typically get phone calls when there's a problem. And, and when I first took this position over two years ago, I was getting those calls a lot. Now, it's, it's, it's great to hear, or not hear from my folks, and when I do ask them about it, they're, they're very happy about what's going on down there. And, you know, just from the standpoint that whenever, it's, it's great to have a collaborative relationship with Sean where if there's anything coming down the pipe, he makes sure that he gives us a heads up. We can get that message out to our construction community, and we can work on solutions, you know, implementing the energy efficiency code, things of that nature, just perfect examples. The second thing we were looking for was responsiveness to changes in the industry and workload. And I think this was a critical thing for us. In the past, we've had problems, you know, just within the, you know, the government system, right, and, and scaling up fast enough and scaling down fast enough. And as, as you've seen from the numbers, we're very excited with the, the change in the industry and the, the improvement in, in the industry and where things are headed right now. Permit activity is, is up considerably, and that's very good for my guys, almost too good, you know, to the point where now we've got labor issues and, and other things. But the one thing that's been, that's been great is having the flexibility through Charles Abbott's platform to scale as, as needed. I've, I haven't received one complaint for delays in, in getting inspections or, or anything like that. And then the third part is the fiscal management. And the idea that, I think it was pretty well-accepted that the, the building department under the previous system was, you know, was being subsidized by the general fund. The idea that their fees, regardless of what those numbers are on the page, the fact that they're a percentage of the fees that are being collected, the city never has to worry about going into that hole again. So for those three reasons, you know, we were very excited to be a part of the experiment. I would say that at this point, it's been a very successful experiment, and, and to your guys' point, we are now certainly touting this program in other communities. We worked very closely, in fact, just recently with Lyon County, on implementing a similar private industry strategy for their community development and building services. So we, we love going around the state and talking about what a success it is here. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron. Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Anybody?
One question, Sean. On the electronic plan check, when, when the plan comes in electronically, does it also give you an idea of whether or not it's complies with the code? Or is that still done, are you just getting it electronically and then manually looking at code compliance?
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor. There are software applications that professional designers use that show compliance certification with their plans. Currently, that's an option up to the designer. That's something in the building code I can mandate upfront. However, that's additional cost that would go into design feature. I choose that we do it by looking at the application or looking at the plans. The difference between the hard copy or the paper copy and electronic copy would just be the efficiency of not preparing the copies, multiple copies sent everywhere, efficiency by going to the cloud where the different reviewers can put their comments on and we can see each other's reviews in real time. We can go to something like you described. However, I, I don't think we're at that point where we need. Some building and safety departments do that because of technical shortfalls or labor shortfalls to augment that. The building code allows you to do it. I don't think it's necessary at, at this point. Our process would just give us where this human element is still looking at the plans and, and, and working as a collaborative effort with like fire, public works, engineering development, health department, all together, and looking at the strategy to move forward.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? Motion's in order. I don't know where this motion's going, so.
I am happy to move to continue contract number fourteen fifteen dash zero five zero and amendment number one to said contract for building permit services from Charles Abbott and Associates, Inc., subject to the Board of Supervisors' review in one year.
Motion, and a lot of seconds on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, signal by saying aye. O's nay, carried unanimous. Semper fai.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. All right. Yeah. All right. Let's take up the, the last item for the, before we get to the board supervisor matters. This is appointment of member to the Carson City's representative to the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities where we're just joined. This League of Cities meets once a quarter, meets throughout the Nevada. Whoever gets here will be...
Whoever gets here will be, can probably count on a meeting of at least two to three hours, maybe four hours a quarter. But if it's outside of Carson City, you're going to have to go for probably a day. So it's a fair amount of time. Anybody want to do this? I do NACO, and I tell you, we meet once a month, and it's one full day generally, everywhere. Anybody? There's quiet. I mean... I don't mind, you know, I don't mind doing it if you guys want me to do it. I don't mind, I'm retired, I don't care.
Fill up the rest of your day now.
Fill up the rest of my day. It's up to you.
I would love to move to appoint Mayor Bob Kroll as Carson City's representative on the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities Board of Directors.
I don't mind, it's okay.
I just have one question on the agenda item for city manager. The last sentence on there says enclosed the invoice for Carson City. How much is the, how much do we pay on, there's page number 262, the invoice for Carson City League of Nations dues?
The League of Cities, we pay about $9,700. I'll get you the exact number. I know it's under $10,000, Supervisor Shirk. I'm pretty sure it's $9,700 for the year.
All right, sure nobody else wants to do this? Okay, on the motion, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Pos nay, okay. That's a tough one. All right, let's go to item 22, Board of Supervisors' non-action items. Anybody got anything? Go.
So the Animal Services Group has been meeting, and so we may be asking for a future agenda item to look at the leash laws. I've been getting a lot of phone calls and questions about them. So maybe like we did the RV, where we brought the ordinances to the board, and we looked at them, made some comments as a group, and then they came back to us. So we may be looking to try and bring leash law discussion.
And I would just like to thank Joel Dunn and the panel that included Nick Morano and Jonathan Bulware and Christina Fay for all the time spent yesterday interviewing candidates for the Arts and Culture Coordinator position. It was huge. They did their presentations last night, and I do believe that Joel Dunn is making an offer today, so.
Yeah, anybody else? I got to say, you know, I attended the interview process last night, or at least part of it. Lori was there and Karen was there. It was rather, I was extremely pleased, the quality of people who we get to come to Carson City. I mean, these were some nationally and internationally recognized folks who came to Carson City to talk about, you know, what they could do for us. So it was a good evening to hear that. Also, I'd like to thank the, you know, our public work staff and everybody for getting McFadden Plaza going and what they're doing out on Carson Street. I know that, you know, they're working hard to get everything, working hard to get everything done. And I've heard nothing but good comments about the McFadden Plaza, so. Anybody else got anything? Okay, we're going to, then if there's nothing else, we're going to be in recess until 1:00. And we're going to, on the interview process, we're going to interview everybody again. So we'll just do new questions. And I understand that Janice McCauley is not, she's withdrawn, so that means that I don't think, unless there's somebody who's, that I don't know about, I think we're all able to ask questions, so we'll ask them all again. And then we'll make a decision this afternoon.
Will Stacy be here? Is he doing by phone?
Stacy, we can try Stacy by phone. We'll see if we can get him, okay? And you can go first, is that all right?
There you go.
Good, all right. You get to go first, all right. All right, any other board comments or things like that? All right, I don't see any. We're ready to recess until 1:00. Hearing no objection, we'll recess until 1:00.